All right, very good. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Edina City Council meeting for Tuesday, November 15, 2022. It is 7:00 p.m. Some folks are watching this on cable TV or on edinamn.gov live meetings or facebook.com, and that's because we're conducting our meetings in a hybrid fashion. Continuing to do so, did that during the pandemic, actually were all remote for a period of time, and then have been running these hybrid meetings. So some folks are watching on cable or on their computer or on Facebook on their computer. And if they want to participate in community comment, which is coming up shortly in the agenda, or in the three public hearings, any of those public hearings, here's the call-in number. There is the PIN number on the screen. Press *1 to speak to an operator, and the operator will get you into Director Benarot. And remember to give us your name and address when you come on the line if you want to speak either during community comment or a public hearing. For community comment, remember that you can't talk to the council about anything that's otherwise on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing, but you could certainly call back with respect to one of those public hearing matters that we're going to have this evening. So keep that in mind. Having provided that information on the call to meeting to order, and I'm going to ask our clerk Sharon Allison, who did a fantastic job running the election in the city of Edina last week, to call role for us. Noel, yes, Clerk Allison, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Staunton is absent. Mayor Hovland.
Here. Next matter before us is the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. Next is the potential approval of the meeting agenda. Staff or council members wish to modify the agenda in any form or fashion? All right. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner, uh, it's Commissioner. Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the approval of the meeting agenda. I use that word commissioner because sometimes we sit as the housing redevelopment authority. That's coming up Thursday morning, so we wear two hats. We've got a motion, the second to approve the meeting agenda as published. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approval, approval of the meeting agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And now we are at community comment. And first of all, I'm going to turn to the audience, and I think you recall Director Benarot said you'd have three minutes. If there's a matter of concern to you that's not on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing, feel free to come forward. You'll get the green light, and you can start. And when you see the yellow light, you have about 30 seconds to wrap up your comments. That way, we use the clock, so we treat everybody equally here in terms of their comments. So feel free to come forward and address the council on a matter of concern to you if it's important to do so. All right, I don't see anybody coming forward, don't hear anything. Is there anyone on the line that wishes to participate in community comment? Director Benarot?
I do not yet have anyone on the line. Because we just started, I would recommend we wait a minute or so because there is a slight delay in the broadcast. My clock shows that it's 7:05, so I'll come back to you when I have a caller or at 7:06, whichever is first.
All right, thank you.
It is now 7:06, and I still don't have a caller, so I think it's safe to move forward.
Thanks. As is our practice, after community comment, our city manager responds to community comments that were made in the prior meeting, and we're prepared to have Manager Neil speak to at least one of the issues that some of the residents were concerned about that were with us a couple of weeks ago that we hope has been resolved.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, we have one issue that was presented to the council in community comment at the meeting on November 1, and that was concerns around a proposed new group home at 6204 Lockmore. There were some questions from some of the neighbors or one of the neighbors that made this presentation to you. The city staff and legal team had some additional discussion, not only with the proposed owner, the owner of the proposed group home, but also with state officials who are charged with regulating group homes. This is a very common issue in many cities across Minnesota. Rules around group homes are structured to allow them, not to disallow them. Really, they are structured to restrict cities from restricting groups, group homes. But we have had some pretty fruitful discussions, actually, with the state regulatory staff around some possible ordinance changes and amendments that we might bring to you later this spring to provide the city some regulatory management of these group homes in the future. In this particular case, English Rose, who was the proposed owner, has announced that they are discontinuing their, not, they are canceling their purchase agreement on 6204, and they are not moving forward with a proposed group home at that location. I asked a representative from English Rose today if I could share that with you, and he said that I could. So that is the plan for this particular location. As for the city's planning and legal team, we'll continue to work forward with our state regulatory folks to see if there are some things that we could do here at the local level.
Good. I also want to thank our attorney, Dave Kendall, and Kerry Teague for getting after this issue right away and analyzing it and finding a pathway that I think satisfies the residents in that neighborhood. So thanks for coming over this evening, folks, and it sounds like that there will not be a third group home on Lockmore, at least at 6204. But keep, stay vigilant, and in the meantime, we're going to be working on a potential pathway forward towards a little further regulation in this regard. So thanks for being with us this evening. Anything else, Manager Neil?
That's all that I have.
Okay. Next matter before us is the consent agenda. There's several items on the consent agenda. I wanted to pull, and I think some others did as well, item 6Y, which is a potential rescission of the agreement with the school district to run their elections. I want to have a little bit more conversation around that issue. So other than 6Y, is there any other item that any council member would like to pull off the consent agenda? All right. With the exception of 6Y, is there a motion to approve the balance of the items on the consent agenda on a single motion?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Anderson seconds the adoption of the consent agenda with the exception of item 6Y. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And now let's go to 6Y, and I wanted to turn to our manager, Scott Neal, and ask for a little bit further discussion around this issue of staff suggestion that we discontinue, I think, after 2023, the, doing the, running the elections for the school district.
Sure, thank you, Your Honor. Yes, this is a, this is an initiative that staff have been pursuing with the school district, with the Edina School District for a couple of years now. We have had a greater number of elections recently. Elections have become more difficult to carry out, just the operations aspects of local elections are difficult to carry out. So not only are they impacting folks from a democracy standpoint, but from an operation standpoint, we want to make sure that we can do the best work we can, not just for elections, but with all the other things that we do as a city government, and elections are consuming a greater and a greater amount of our energy and our resources. So as we look at potential solutions for that, one of those solutions is to look at this particular agreement we have with the Edina Schools. This is a discretionary agreement. It's really not, it's becoming less common today, perhaps, than it was in years past. I think some of the data that we pulled together was that 30, I think 30 school districts have agreements with their cities to operate elections. We feel that the right thing to do in this case for our staff, for our volunteers, and for our clerk's office, who spend most of the time actually running these operations, is to teach more people how to run their own elections. And so this is one of the things that we have talked about with school staff and also with the school district city partnership committee in our last meeting. So they are aware of this. We have talked through some of the difficulties around it. We believe that we can teach them to operate their own elections and that we can continue to operate our own elections, and we can both do a good job at that in serving the public.
Could you comment a little bit on the view of the school district on this, because I haven't seen any correspondence from them? I haven't been a participant in any conversations with them as to their view of the world on this. Maybe some of our other council members have, but I'd be interested at least.
I think our initial response from them was cool. They were not, I think, fully aware of all the different things that happen behind the scenes to run an operation like an election. Since then, we've had some additional discussions with their staff and also with school board members at the partnership committee, and really, I think, have achieved a greater level of understanding. And one of the things that we offered to them that is really valuable to them was this agreement to continue to operate the 2023 election for the school district and during 2023 also discuss how elections will be operated in the future.
It strikes me that we, because of the complexity of elections, we've probably been doing this for them for over 50 years, and it just, it worries me that in a one-year period of time, that they're not going to be able to adequately run their own election. And I know while it creates stress and responsibility for our city clerk and her team that are employed by the city and our volunteers, we're nonetheless compensated by the school district for that work that we do, is my understanding.
We are compensated, we are paid by schools, by the school district, somewhere between $100,000 and $150,000 to operate the discretionary election. So in the off year, we are fortunate, and the district is fortunate, that they have a new finance director who has elections experience in his previous employment. So we think with that person in place that we can easily walk through and work out the details of how elections would be operated by the school district in, after 2023.
Member Jackson, have you had any conversations with folks at the school district about this?
Well, we had, Member Anderson and I were on the committee that talked with them about this, and there is training both through Hennepin County and through the University of Minnesota Humphrey School on how to run an election. So it's something that clerks can learn, and that was part of the discussion. I know they're concerned about putting it in the general election, and so it's, the way the issue's been framed up is, we are happy to do it on the even years, to run their elections, and they can run them on the odd years. And I really like the compromise of allowing 2023 where we will run it, and they can shadow us and learn how it's going. And because we can do it that way, this is not a permanent thing. If 2023 seems absolutely overwhelming to the school district as they go through this, we can always go back. So nothing about this is going to be permanent or damaging, but we give them that grace period to look at this a little more, you know, with some experience.
Your sense, both of the sense, the sense of both of you that work as liaisons of the school district on behalf of the city are comfortable with this sort of compromise that's been created?
Yes, Your Honor, I am certainly, and I know that Member Jackson is as well. I concur with the city manager's description of relatively cool on the part of the district itself in terms of them running their elections. And I think I would say that it's dealing with the unfamiliarity and the concerns that come about, what if we can't pull this off? That's what I see. But I'm extremely sensitive to the commitment of staff and the commitment of facilities itself to running their elections on a consistent basis. But as Member Jackson says, if they can't pull it off, and if they do decide that they wish to run their own elections as opposed to moving in with a general election cycle, then we can always move back and retrench and say, well, okay, let's give it another year. But I think over the long haul, it's probably best for all parties to say, we should either do this together or do it separately, but not here.
Okay. You just hit a chord with me, and that is, I feel like we're in this together, and it's, so I don't feel like it's their election. It's electing people to the school board that are part of our community, and this is something we've done for so long. To deviate from that historic practice and just put it on their shoulders strikes me as, I'm reluctant to do it, but I'm also, on balance, probably willing to take the advice of the two of you that have worked on this issue with the school district to get them comfortable with at least experimenting with 2023. I could live with that, but I want to be able to, I want to be able to assist them if necessary on this issue, even in 2023, to make sure that our town and the citizens in our town get the right kind of elections, the historic kind of elections that they've had that are trouble-free, you know? I don't have anything, I don't have any fears about the integrity of the election, I just feel like it needs to function properly and be effective and efficient.
If I may, and I want to hear from the clerk as well, but it's important to remember that elections in 1989, when this agreement was written, were dramatically different from what they are in 2022, that we've added a primary presidential election, and we now have this in-person early voting for 46 days, which is about six weeks.
Good point.
And that's a tremendous disruption to the people here at City Hall. And so we're sort of in new waters, and we care very much about the school district and the quality of their elections and, you know, making sure that this works, and we are in partnership with them, but we're also sort of in uncharted territories with the changes to election laws in general.
Okay. Well, I did write to the superintendent and the chair of the school board, and I didn't hear back from them, so I think their silence is acquiescence. At least that's the way I would interpret it. But Member Pierce, any thoughts that, do you want to?
I concur. I love the way that Member Jackson talked about, this is kind of an on-ramp, if you will, so they, the school board has an opportunity to shadow us. And so I think, given that approach with training, and then they take it on after that, I just think that's a sound way to change anything, just to have that kind of an on-ramp. So that's what gives me the comfort in the approach.
Okay. I want to turn to our clerk now, who is probably the most important person in the conversation, who's just gotten, you know, just finished running, really, I think, another first-rate election in the midterm in our community. Clerk Allison, your thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Jackson completely. And in terms of training, the county or the school district will go through the same training that I go through with the county, and they will be certified by the county. They will have the county as their partner, hand in hand, to make sure that they are running the election in the same manner that the city, that we run our election here. So just a point of clarification, and per state statute, school districts are required to run their own elections.
Okay. All right, you've made me more comfortable. I had some real anxiety about this. All right, so is there a motion to rescind, this is as to item 6Y. The motion would be to rescind the independent school district number 273 agreement and approve the 2023 general school district election agreement.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Anderson to the motion as stated. All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? All right, thanks for that. Good discussion. Now on to special recognitions and presentations, and we've got a group of folks in our audience representing our small business community. We've got Lori Severson from the chamber with us this evening, and Ryan Weber, who is the president of the 50th and France Business Association, who works for U.S. Bank, and our own Bill Newendorf, our economic development director. And the proclamation, dealing with small business, that I'm about to read is as follows. Proclamation, Small Business Saturday, November 26, 2022. Whereas there are more than 2,400 businesses in the city of Edina, and according to the U.S. Census, over 96% of all firms with paid employees in Hennepin County have fewer than 100 employees and are classified as small business. And whereas small businesses are located in each of Edina's commercial districts, including 44th and France, 50th and France, 70th and Cahill, Cahill Business Industrial Park, Grandview, Lincoln Drive, Southdale and Greater Southdale, Pentagon Park, Washington Avenue, Wood Dale Valley View. And whereas, according to the U.S. Small Business Administration, small business accounts for 2/3rds of the nation's employment growth. And whereas the SBA indicates that small businesses need continued community support as they continue to navigate, retool, and pivot from the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic and changing consumer trends. And whereas 79% of consumers surveyed in the 2021 Consumer Insights survey understand the importance of supporting small businesses located in the community. And whereas for many local residents, the Thanksgiving holiday kicks off a season of gathering, dining, shopping, and experiencing arts and culture, and consumers know that supporting small, independently-owned businesses has positive social, economic, and environmental impact. And whereas the SBA, as well as other public and small and private organizations across the country, have recognized and promoted this Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. And whereas the city of Edina celebrates our local businesses and recognizes the vital contributions these businesses make to the local economy and to the overall health and vibrancy of our community. Now therefore be resolved that the Edina City Council does hereby proclaim November 26, 2022 as Small Business Saturday in the city of Edina, and urges all residents and guests in our community to support small business and merchants located in Edina's, each of Edina's commercial districts on this day, November 26, 2022, and throughout the year. Is there a motion to adopt that proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the proclamation of November 26, 2022 as Small Business Saturday in the city of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the proclamation as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? We have, as I mentioned, three folks in our audience this evening. Anything you want to comment on, Lori Severson or Ryan? I'll come down and hand you the proclamation, and you can post it as where you think it would be good to post it. I had that to you, and thank you for being here this evening.
Mr. Mayor.
Support small business.
Thank you very much.
May I do that?
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
You mark, who should make, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Lori Severson. I'm president of the Edina Chamber of Commerce, Explore Edina, and the Edina Innovation Lab. I've been fortunate to be part of the small business equation my entire life. My family owns a small Italian restaurant in Wisconsin, and they've done so for more than 80 years, and that's spanning three different generations. I worked with U.S. Bank for 11 years, helping small businesses develop plans for growth. And now through the Edina Chamber and the Innovation Lab, I work hand in hand with those who are literally the heartbeat of our economy and of our community here in Edina. Through the Chamber, we assist small businesses in those traditional ways that you've heard of, helping to build brand awareness, helping them to make valuable connections, to create strategic partnerships, and to provide educational opportunities. And over the last six months, I've had an opportunity to work with small businesses in the trenches with them in the Innovation Lab. The lab is a place where entrepreneurs can experiment with new ideas, new possibilities, learn from other successful business leaders, and find the catalysts that they need to accelerate their growth and create their version of the 2.0 American dream. Even though I've been around small business my entire life, working at the Chamber and in the Innovation Lab has been a welcome reminder of the dedication and passion that small businesses bring to Edina. It's not just the dedication and passion in what they do, but it is the dedication and passion that they bring to the community and their love for this community. On behalf of Edina Small Businesses, I'd like to thank you for this recognition.
All right, thank you, Ms. Severson.
I will just.
Robert?
My name is Ryan Weber. I'm the president of the 50th and France Business Association. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council members, for the recognition of Small Business Saturday. Small business is the heartbeat of the 50th and France Business Association, and we look forward to celebrating on the 26th with the lighting of our tree with the mayor. And at the 50th and France Business Association, we provide, help provide marketing and promote the businesses throughout the year and create events that welcome guests from the Edina area and around the region. So thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Ms. Weber. And Mr. Newendorf, any comment at all? As our economic development manager?
Just very briefly, I'd like to highlight our local businesses, but thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for this recognition. This is something we've thought about doing for a long time, but this is actually the first time Edina has ever recognized this Small Business Saturday in a formal way. So thank you for recognizing the importance of small business to our community. It's part of what makes Edina really special, and thank you for that recognition.
All right, thank you for being here with us, with us this evening. All right. Next matter in this portion of the agenda is an information item for us from our police chief, Todd Milburn, which deals with the Joint Community Police Partnership. And he's going to make a presentation regarding that Joint Community Police Partnership. And there's also, I think, Donald Ryan here with us, program manager for Safe Communities, and Nathan Howard, the supervisor for the Joint Community Police Partnership with Hennepin County. So we welcome those two gentlemen as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Chief, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Chief Milburn with the police department, very happy and excited tonight to talk about JCPP. As you recall, when I first started, one of the commitments that I made is that we're going to focus heavily on expanding our community engagement efforts here in this community, and a lot of that work goes into building trust with our community members. We think about the trust-building process, particularly in times of when people are happy or when people are upset. It's important to do that work in both settings, right? And so we want to focus hard on doing that work and building that trust for our community. We also want to focus on building future leaders and leadership within the community to figure out who has a say and who wants to have a say in law enforcement interactions with community members, the work that we do, and open up that window of opportunity for people to get a snapshot of what the police department, what it looks like, day in and day out. It's a great opportunity to build those relationships between our police staff and our community members. One way to do that is through JCPP. I've experienced, have had a lot of experience with JCPP over the years, for 20-plus years. As you know, I came from Brooklyn Park, and we worked with the county to do this work extensively, to partner with Hennepin County and to collaborate. So I have extensive background with this partnership, and we thought it was a really good idea to bring here to this community because of the value that it brings forward. So I've asked my friends, my partners with the county, Don Ryan, who is our program manager, Safe Communities, with Safe Communities in Hennepin County, and also Nathan Howard, who is the supervisor of the JCPP, to come forward and talk about this and present about 10 slides. We're going to talk through it here, get you all familiar with what it is. You can hear things about the MAC Committee, the cultural liaison position, and talk through that a little bit. It's just a presentation. We welcome thoughts, comments, questions on the back end of that, and then we hope to come back to you in a couple of weeks to put on the consent and then sign an agreement with Hennepin County if everyone's comfortable with it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Don and Nathan, and thank you for coming.
All right, thank you, Chief. Ryan, welcome.
Thank you. Do I need this?
Yes. First to the podcast.
Mayor Hovland, city council members, thank you very much for having us today. The Joint Community Police Partnership, otherwise known as JCPP, has been around since 2005. It started in Brooklyn Park and Brooklyn Center, and I'll go through some of that history. The key is that what we want to do is improve relationships and communications with community and with law enforcement, both leaders and officers on the street. Both are really important. We currently work with eight cities that we have agreements with. We are hoping that Edina is going to be one of those in 2023. We have three main strategies, and this is a brief overview. So we have time for questions and discussion afterwards. We wanted to be respectful of your time, so please understand this is a brief presentation. The first is, we want to make sure community members are aware of police procedures and laws. Secondly, we want to make sure that officers have the knowledge and understanding of working with especially diverse cultural communities, but everybody who is a member of the community. with especially diverse cultural communities, but everybody who is a member of the community. And lastly, what we want to make sure is we set up a relationship where there's free dialogue. The idea is not to create a human rights commission. This is more about relationship building between the community and the Police Department. So it's, I'll give you a little bit of history. Commissioner Opat was the person who, in 2005, brought the program into fruition. It was a response to a large Liberian influx. Of course, at the time, we had a lot of Liberian folks who were coming to the U.S., given the civil war, and they came to a number of East Coast cities that they didn't feel very welcome in, and they ended up coming to Minnesota and developing a very strong community here. At one point, I don't know if this is still true, but at one point, there were more Liberians living in Brooklyn Park and Brooklyn Center than there were anywhere else in the world outside of Liberia. As they came quickly, we found there were a lot of interactions between the police and the Liberian community that had nothing to do with crime. It was all about misunderstanding. It was all about not understanding how the police interact with the community. I'll give you a couple of examples. As people were pulled over for a random traffic stop, whatever that would be, speeding, careless driving, it was normal for people to get out of their cars and walk back towards the, to the police officer, because that's what they would do in Liberia. We had a number of situations with parties, baptisms, graduations, celebration of a child in the communities, a celebration of the whole community, and without understanding that we would have large gatherings. We found that we had people who had gatherings of 150, 200 people. We had complaints from neighbors. All of a sudden, police are responding, and the people who are hosting the party don't understand why the police are responding in such numbers, which of course is commonplace because we have such a large number of people. What we did was, we did, we set up in those two cities, two Hennepin County staff people, and I won't talk too much about this because Nate's going to go into this in greater detail, embedded in those police departments. They set up committees where people from the community had opportunities to talk to police. About 2015, we really shifted from more of a focus on immigration to a focus on residence police relationships. And it was really important, especially around this time, we had cell phones that were catching a lot of interactions with police on the street. They would go on Facebook. It was, it was an emergence of this. It was really important at that time that we focus on relationships between police and the community. So we changed our focus, and we found that all of the cities that we work with really appreciate both the Police Department and the community, the relationship building that we are trying to offer. Communities feel like they have input into some decisions. I'll give a couple of examples. One is, five, six years ago, all departments in Minnesota went to body worn cameras. Lots of local police departments looked nationally to see what the protocol was, how other departments were implementing this. We were able to offer our multicultural advisory committee, which Nate will talk about in a second, and ask questions of the police, ask questions of the community through this dialogue. We were able to come up with a system that fit Richfield, that fit Bloomington, because Brooklyn Park and Hopkins are two very different places. Edina is a very different place. We recognize these are all separate communities. So we want to focus on what works well for each community. I was in one of those meetings in Richfield, and I heard questions like, how long will we hold on to this videotape? What if there are kids involved? What if it's a domestic? If it's different in the house versus on the car? Is it different if someone says, "I don't want to be videotaped"? All of these questions from the community led to the police looking at this and saying, "That's a really good question. Let's figure this out." Police really appreciated it. The community really appreciated they had input. Another example is, a couple of years ago, we had some threats to some mosques in Bloomington. We had already developed relationships with the leaders of the mosques. We already had people from the Somali community on the multicultural advisory committee. The whole purpose is to have relationships between the community and the Police Department before there's a critical incident. Because we had these relationships, we were able to work with the mosques in a much different way than if we were coming in cold and the police didn't have those kind of relationships. I can give you many other examples. I'm going to stop there, and I'm going to let Nate talk a little bit about what each liaison does and how the program works.
All right. Thanks, Ryan.
So as Don said, creating a relationship between the Police Department and the community is key, and so there are five key elements. And the first one is, each department has a community liaison dedicated to their city. Each, they establish a multicultural advisory committee, and that is a committee that's facilitated by the liaison of community members, community leaders of different cultural backgrounds. And I'll get into a little bit of what they do on the next slide. Number three is community trainings, dialogues, and question and answers, Q and A sessions, the role of the police, and how the community is affected, and what better, what better discussions can be had in the community, what they think is helping with the police as well as things that could be changed. Cultural awareness training for law enforcement officers, working to ensure the recruitment and training of diverse cadets, community service officer positions. Thank you. So the community liaison acts as a bridge between the police and the community. They facilitate and lead community meetings, organize events and trainings for both the police as well as the community. They act as personal ambassadors, eyes and ears to and from community groups. So basically, the liaison is the one that, you know, a lot of times, police can't directly go and have relationships with certain community members because of maybe trust issues or what have you. So the liaison is not an officer, but he can work within the community and then bridge that gap. So he facilitates, he or she facilitates events, or as in the MAC, they can come together and have these questions directly with the Police Department, and they can get answers for questions they may be having in a safe environment where the officers can give them information on why they do what they do, and the community can have answers on, you know, if they're misled, or if there are issues going on, they can understand what's really happening instead of speculating.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Howard. Go ahead.
At this time, we'd just like to welcome any questions or discussions you'd like to have, so you have a good understanding of the program.
Questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So thanks for the presentation. This is definitely one of the things that, when Edina had Raising Equity Task Force, that group of volunteers recommended, finding ways to improve community relations between police and different communities. So definitely applaud this effort. The only question I had is, you talked a lot about multicultural, and so my other question is just about mental health. And so there are lots of different challenges by community, right? It's different depending on which community you're in, but I do wonder if liaisons will also have, be equipped to be able to help deal with mental health issues within the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. I appreciate it. Hennepin County also has a program where they have social workers embedded in police departments to better deal with emotional health issues, especially if somebody is a suicide threat or reporting that they are. Also to make sure that we can provide services to people before it comes a crisis. That's different than this position. Now, is there some crossover? Absolutely. But these are not social workers. These aren't people that have psychiatric or psychological training. These are folks that are, are working to create a bridge between the community. They do a lot of facilitation of meetings. Of course, we, in every situation, we're out, we get a personal story about something that's happening in the community. So that person has to be able to direct the resident or that officer to the right place, but we want to, we want to draw a distinction there so we don't, we don't find that there's a strong crossover.
Thank you.
And with that being said, sometimes, for instance, like Bloomington, we do have people from that background, so they have that experience, but that's not necessarily their job, but they do have the background, some of them.
Thank you.
Thanks, Member Pierce. Others? Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So help me kind of walk through what the structure of this looks like. Is there a staff liaison, and then there's a citizen committee? And, you know, are they trained? And sort of functionally, how does this, what does this look like?
What we found is, it was really important to have the liaison be a Hennepin County employee. The reason for that is, we wanted to ensure that we had objectivity. We didn't want a situation where a community was coming back and saying, "Wait a minute. You work for the city, so you're listening to what the mayor's saying, you're listening to what the police is saying, the police chief is saying." We want to create a situation where we're not employed by the city of Edina or any other city. We are working as a Hennepin County employee to look for the best interests of the community. That person is embedded in the Police Department to make sure that those relationships are built and strong. So having that daily interaction with folks in the Police Department and the residents of Edina are really important. And then we're going to go to the Police Department, we're going to go to schools, we're going to go to churches, we're going to find out who the leaders of the community are. It takes a little time to build that up. We usually have around 10 to 12 people as representatives. We're not looking for directors or, of agencies. What we're looking for are community members who are strong leaders in the community.
So just to refine that a little bit, these are just people who, for instance, I'm just thinking of my neighbor who's head of the League of Women Voters. For some reason, maybe she is going to be one of the leaders that you go to. So she won't be, it won't be like a commissioner with the city. It'll be someone who has a position outside of the government that you would know to go to if there was an issue. And so you would meet these people and build your network, really, as opposed to something more formal, like a commission type of thing. Is that correct?
Yes and no, but we wouldn't be looking for someone in a specific position like that. We are looking for the resident who's been living in Edina for 30 years and knows the community. Has nothing to do with their position or their profession. It has to do with community relationships and how committed they are to doing that.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you so much. It's an exciting program.
Member Anderson?
Thank you. This is a question that could be answered by either you or the chief. Maybe the chief is first up. In your past working relationship with the partnership, did you find that, and do you find, that you're able to find, can you anticipate conflicts in the community and then work towards resolution of these potential conflicts before they come up? Is that, is that the thrust of your work?
Yeah. Mayor Hovland and Councilmember Anderson, absolutely. In law enforcement, things change on a weekly basis. We're dealing with all kinds of issues that just pop up, and that brings into question conversations, issues, and we have to be adaptable to that. And so what we would leverage this MAC Committee to do is to talk about those very issues, and that would also help us inform our policymaking decisions on the police side. Or, for example, we'll go back to the body camera policy example, bring those kinds of things forward and have a dialogue, which will help educate us on what is that community, what are our community members feeling and experiencing, what are those concerns to help us out on the front end before we have to wait until it works its way through or we're in a difficult position on the back end. So absolutely, that's exactly what that is for, is to work through those very early on. And we build those relationships. The other thing I'll add to this, too, all you know Emily Jepson, one of our outstanding officers, who's going to be our full-time community engagement officer starting next year, January 1st. She's going to be paired with that community liaison position. It's going to be an embedded liaison position operating out of our building here, and that relationship will take off and it will work closely with each other on those issues, helping to do community engagement events. There's going to be a lot of event planning that comes out of this to work through that engagement opportunity. And there's other things that we would get into, like new Citizens Academy kind of things. You know, that's a good example that we used to do, too, to help educate and develop those relationships. So we're developing a community engagement team by leveraging this existing resource and this MAC Committee that we're going to develop out over the, over the long haul, too.
Anything further, Member Anderson?
Thank you very much.
Okay. I know this was informational only, but the subject matter, Joint Community Police Partnership, seems to me to connote some sort of legal relationship at some point in time. There's, there's a legal structure for it, and then there'd be a partnership agreement drawn between the JCPB and the city of Edina. Is that correct?
Yes. Up until about 2018, Hennepin County was providing the full cost of the program to cities. There was a, there was a relook at that right around 2018, and we came to an agreement that each city would pay for 30% of the cost of that liaison, and Hennepin County would pick up 70% of that. So as a result, we have contracts with each city, between the city and the Joint Community Police Partnership.
All right. Good. Thanks, Mr. Ryan. So at some point in time, Chief, we all see an agreement that we need to put our blessing on, or are you able to?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. That's exactly what we're going to bring forward to the next council meeting, likely put on consent and S.A. approved it.
Very good. Very good. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here with us this evening. Appreciate you taking the time to be here and explain everything.
Thank you.
And thank you, Chief. Sounds like a first-rate program. The experience of it has really led to some, some great success, it sounds like. I know otherwise, our chief wouldn't be promoting it.
Sure.
All right. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Now, we're going to hear about what's proposed as the new turf restoration policy, and this is quite pleasing to see so quickly after having to wrestle with this problem over in the Melody Lake neighborhood. So thanks for getting right on this problem.
Thanks, Mayor. Members of council, let's talk a little turf restoration. I promised I'd come back before the public hearing on December 6th for next year's street recon. So we'll talk about the historical, like how we got to where we are today, talk about the department-level policy that we're, we're going to share with you tonight, and then just talk about a little bit accountability, which we've talked about in the past. So historically, pre-2013, the restoration for street reconstruction was sod. I'll show some pictures and why we got away from that at the time. Then for the past 10 years or so, we did hydro seed, and I'll show some pictures, and we've discussed that many times over the past 10 years. And then I'm proposing we go back to sod here for various reasons. For sure, in 2024, and next year, it'll be kind of a mix of things, and I'll share that with you. So pre-2013, it was sod, and these are some of the pictures. On the left, you can see the sod was having some issues. There was a drought in 2011, 2012. The residents, after that warranty period, did not water, water it, and that's what you get on the left-hand side, not quite as much, but look at the right-hand side, where just chunks of sod were not maintained, not watered by the owner. They didn't take the responsibility, and that's what happened. And that's where the council and the engineering department at the time had discussions about what we should do going forward about turf. Here's some more photos of just, if it's not watered after six weeks by the owner, it is going to fail. There's no doubt about it. So there's two more photos here of showing that if they don't take accountability, it's going to fail. But at the time, we came back and we said, "Let's try something new." So in 2013, we went to seed. There's various reasons why we did that. I won't get into all those in your report. You could see the history of a couple of different memos we've done over time, and you can see the issue. But this is what it looks like, you hydro seed it if it's, again, a nice wet year. That comes in really good. If not, you see some of these type issues, which we saw in 2016 with the street recon and this year, like the mayor mentioned. And over time, we were able to correct it, so this was before and after. But again, we were chasing contractors. Residents weren't pleased with the situation, but eventually there, on the right-hand side, we were able to get it to an acceptable restoration point. So I'm proposing that we go back to sod. We reviewed this from We reviewed this from a sustainability lens, and there's really not a definitive study that says one is major benefit better than the other. The initial cost, there is a difference. Sod's more expensive upfront. But over the long term, and how often we have to redo the seed, it really isn't that different over time. My main concern for changing is the staff workload and stress levels. I've had two members of staff this, in the whole summer, basically babysitting seed, and they just can't do that. We have more important things than the babysit grass and seed. Just takes too much time. And then that final point, the community's asking for sod. I mean, we heard that from Melody. You guys were out there walking, and they're asking for it, so let's provide it. So in the policy, you'll see that the street reconstruction program is majority sod with some discretion of the engineer. And we noted that because there's going to be some warranty work where there's just little patches behind the curb or around other warranty work where sod just doesn't make sense. And seed will be fine in those circumstances, or it's a steep slope. Public works will continue using sod for snowplow damage, smaller repairs in utilities. We wanted to make sure to note that. And then the private utility companies are going to continue to do seed and blankets and other things to restore it. And they've been pretty good about responding to resident feedback and stuff like that. So we would keep the right-of-way permitting side the same. So it's really that first point about the street reconstruction program. We'd recommend a six-week contractor maintenance period. This really is that watering of the contractor to just get it started, because recall, both of these take two or three years to establish. So it gets back to that accountability of the residents to maintain it. We'd update our construction specifications and meet with industry experts to make sure those are in line with what we should be doing. The warranty period may span multiple growing seasons. So if it's placed late in September, it may also get warranty in the spring outside those typical growing seasons identified by MINDOT. And then the real important piece of this is communication with the residents. What are we doing? When are we doing it? And when is it their responsibility? And then communicating that multiple times when that responsibility piece happens. So we don't get what happened there on the right-hand side with this photo. So we know if we go to sod, about 60% of the people have irrigation systems. Those will be fine. You know, they'll do fine. We know 20% to 30% are going to put the effort in and manually water. We're going to have 10% to 20%, I'm guessing, that are going to look like this, and they're going to die. And if it's an access or an accommodation issue, an age or disability, we would help them. We did that for a few properties issues, so they just have to talk to us. But sometimes, there's people just not doing it that's able to do it. And we're going to have to, I'll be back up here, I'm sure, when there's complaints about this type of thing happening. And we got to say we clearly communicated. It was your responsibility, and I don't think we should go back and repair stuff like this when a resident didn't take ownership. So I'm just saying, we should stand by the policy when we move forward. As you know, we have two projects. Morningside and Blake Road is going to be spread over this year and next year because of private utility delays. In both projects, we've already started seeding portions of it, and they're looking really good because there's a lot of shade, there's irrigation systems. So we would probably stay with seed in 2023. Like I mentioned, there's some good areas. And along Meere Lake, you want seed along a lake where there's nobody there to be responsible. We'd make the complete switch in 2024 with those projects to sod. We may do some next year, but that split of those projects is a little difficult to do at midstream on residents at this point. So I just wanted to share that department-level restoration policy with the council and see if there's any feedback. And then I'll just note this photo here is from the crane that's right across the street at Perkins here, showing the top of City Hall and looking to downtown. I thought it was a good photo to throw in there. So I'll stand for any questions.
All right. Questions for Director Milner? Comments on this proposed turf restoration policy change? Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So looking at these memos from 2018 and 2013, it sounds as though sod is not as good with sustainability. Can you go into that a little bit more detail? Because I trust your analysis, but reading that, it did sound like it was take a lot more gasoline to make sod than it does to take seed. So if you could talk about that, some might appreciate it.
I think, looking at the total life cycle of either, we didn't account for all the extra work with seed. People going out there maintaining it multiple, multiple times. You saw the weed photos, trying to mow those down, remove the weeds, rework it. All that was not in that initial seed. So if it was just a one-for-one, you place it and it works, yes. But when you're doing all the rework, cradle to grave, we were not able to find, we looked at Harvard Business Review, we looked at the U of M Extension Office, there's no studies that says one is highly more sustainable than the others. So we provided that data. Those were the information we looked at at the time of those two memos.
Okay, thank you.
Member Anderson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Director Milner, I think that this is a really good plan because it's in demand. And if you look back at Melody Lake, had the sod been installed initially, then might not have had the issues that existed there. However, I think that the issue there was really failure on the part of the contractor to water consistently and to keep that stuff wet. And you're mentioning that that's a challenge going forward as well. So the only thing that I would throw out here is, is that if there's a way to communicate that particularly clearly with the people who are in any given assessment district, that'll be very useful. And there may even be some people that say, well, we'd rather have seed because we can't stay on top of the sod. And you have the ability to do that in those instances. So I think it's a great idea. It's just the watering piece of this is a concern. I know it is for you, and we see it come up from time to time, but thank you for your hard work on this.
Thank you.
At one time during Weed Gate, you were so frustrated, you were thinking about doing this yourself internally and hiring staff to, in the future, make sure that that strip between the back of the curb and the cutback line on the yard was done the right way and done by us. So somewhere along the line, you've decided that if we go with sod, you're not going to have to hire somebody else, and you're not going to have to do it yourself. I suppose the only thing you're going to have to do, to remember Anderson's point, is make sure whoever, whatever contractor we hire, we got, A, a good bond on them, and B, that they do what they said they were going to do. So what are your thoughts about those comments?
Yeah, I would say this is strictly the policy. We're doing sod. Right now, it would be contractors, but we're going to have internal discussions yet on who is going to potentially manage that and what that looks like. So I think on the operations side, we haven't had those discussions. I just wanted to lay out, we're going to sod in 2024, whether it's engineering, handling man, whether it's a new staff member, those discussions are still coming forward.
Okay, all right, very good. We'll wait for that analysis by you. It's always good. Is there a motion to adopt the turf restoration policy as recommended by Director Milner?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Pierce, second by Member Jackson, to adopt the turf restoration policy as recommended by Director Milner. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried. All right, very good. Thanks, Director Milner. Now, we're going to move on to the public hearing portion of the agenda. We've got three public hearing matters in front of us this evening. Our community development director, Kerry Teague, has the first matter, which involves another potential addition of a property or in a building out at Pentagon Village, which has been something that's been challenged due to the pandemic and other things. It's nice to see things happening out there. So Director Teague.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. So as mentioned, this property is located in Pentagon Village. It's guided office residential in our comprehensive plan. And there was a PUD zoning designation put over it back with the original development back in 2018 and 19. So here is a look at the overall approved PUD. The two retail buildings have been constructed, the parking ramp and the housing and apartment are under construction. The site we're looking at this evening is the corner of 77th and Computer, right here. Again, another view of the approved PUD, and this is the site that we're looking at. The original approval called for a 19,000-square-foot office or retail building. What the applicant is proposing to do here is build a 15,000-square-foot bank and office building with an indoor drive-through. Just to show you a couple of renderings, the architect will go through this in more detail. There's a view from 77th, from Computer, and a look at the indoor drive-through facility. So what this request requires is a site plan review and an ordinance amendment that would allow an additional sign, an internal facing signage into the development. Ordinance requires, you can have a wall sign as long as it faces a public right-of-way. And there's two right-of-ways here, so they're asking for a third wall sign to face the interior of the project. So a quick review of the site plan. Again, here's a comparison of the original approval and the building and the proposal this evening. So the drive-through would be accessed to the south of the building, through and out along 77th. There would also be an office building, the bank portion of the building on the first floor with the office above it. Full landscape plan is proposed that's consistent with city code. All of the setbacks are met here, consistent with the approved overall PUD. The site is essentially pad-ready. The parking has been installed. It's just ready for a new building. With the signage that's proposed, the symbol would be located right here, this First Bank and Trust signage here, and the additional signage is this sign right here that faces the interior of the development. Must have the wrong presentation up. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission, and their recommendation is approval this evening for both the site plan and the signage. It helps with wayfinding on the site as well. We did receive a few comments on Better Together, some in support, and there was one resident that doesn't support that additional third signage. The motion this evening is to close the public hearing at noon on November 28th and continue action to the December 6th City Council meeting. With that, I can stand for any questions.
Questions for Director Teague at this point in time? All right. I have a quick question for you. With respect to the site plan approval, would you comment on the discretion that we have as a sitting body on the site plan approval as opposed to some other actions that we might approve?
Yes, very little discretion with the site plan. It conforms to all of the setback requirements, everything that was set out with the original PUD. You could add additional conditions, like landscaping, things like that. But the city has very little discretion when approving and reviewing a site plan.
All right, good. Thank you. I note that you've got the folks from Pentagon Village here. I think Jay Scott's here from the Solomon Real Estate Group, and Scott Logan from First Bank and Trust is with us, and then also Kyle Peterson from HTG Architects. And I have them make a presentation here. I think you've told them they've got about 15 minutes or so to give us their view on this as the applicant. So I'll call up Mr. Scott to lead the way, and then he can... Have you got your orders speaking determined? All right. I didn't mean to be presumptuous.
I'll take it from here. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Hovland. Thank you, members of the City Council.
Would you identify yourself and give us your business address, please?
Kyle Peterson, HTG Architects. I'm the project architect involved, helping out First Bank and Trust.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Peterson.
So again, we are seeking site plan approval for this project, for First Bank and Trust at Pentagon Village. We're seeking exterior design approval and then the signage amendment to the PUD. Three signage pieces are proposed. It's a unique angular site. It's more than a four-sided building. It's closer to five to six-sided. And we think the configuration and surrounding area justifies that. And I'll go into this in more detail here. Another 3D view of the overall development and a view of the building we are proposing So this is a zoomed-out site plan. I'll get into a little more detailed views of this site plan. I'll discuss the floor plan briefly and then the exterior design. Here, I'll just highlight our kind of primary goals going into this development and how we were to integrate with it. We're going to be to really minimize our impact on the existing infrastructure, as was pointed out by Kerry Teague, that we are an already developed site. The parking is already there. The lighting is already there. Some of the sidewalks are already there. If we could take advantage of that and, you know, conform our design to what's already been proposed and what exists, that seems like the path of least resistance and a fitting approach to this site. We wanted to maintain similarities, again, with what has been proposed and approved here, again, as Kerry has highlighted, and then produce a design that does support the goals of our client, First Bank and Trust, and to meld those with the goals of the City of Adana and the Pentagon Village development. So I have two views on this next slide. On the left-hand side is from our civil engineers, shows a bit of the topography there that added some design parameters and challenges to the site. On the right-hand side is a landscape plan, showing how we developed that and the green spaces and landscaped areas that are proposed. The parameters that kind of added some challenges that we were able to design around and kind of led to what is ultimately being proposed are very high water table at this location. According to the watershed district, we were basically set up with a minimum finished floor height that we can go down below, which ends up being about six feet above the existing sidewalk that kind of flanks the perimeter of the overall development. All this to just illustrate, there are a few pieces at play with topography and water table that influence how we locate things, where they end up, and what ultimately the end design output is. I think we were able to successfully navigate that. I think we pinpointed, you'll kind of see on the, you know, towards the northwest, we've got a main entry. And then centered on the west, about at the building midpoint, you'll see highlighted a staff entry. Those are two main points of entry. You'll see that we have vehicular circulation surrounding the site and through our indoor drive-up that's been described, and then pedestrian traffic wrapping the perimeter as well with sidewalks surrounding. A challenging area, we've kind of flagged on the landscape plan as trail. This may or may not be feasible. We wanted to promote the idea that we want to make these walkability avenues possible. That's one area that may or may not be possible. There's a lot of topography there. But the considerations beyond that that we proposed were to give generously wide sidewalks, to give them landscaping, to give them lighting, to illuminate them, to make them feel safe and comfortable into the evening hours. So we kind of took the approach that we saw best fit for what was available to us with the topography and the water table here. We're showing two electric vehicle charging stations. I'm going to go back. They're not indicated on this slide, but you'll see those two EV markers just northwest of our building, those two first parking spaces. Going back to this plan, we're also showing bike parking. We want to promote, in addition to walkability and other avenues of gaining access to the site, that people can bike there, that employees can bike there, that clients can bike there. There are shower facilities within the building and a number of amenities that we've incorporated to make those more possible and more appealing to the people that are going to use the building. I'll just highlight at a very high level what's kind of going into this building that is being proposed, and that it's got the typical bank functions. It's got a teller area. It's got a client lobby with a welcoming fireplace and a coffee bar. Beyond that, we're proposing 30-plus individual workspaces, which is a major expansion on what First Bank and Trust currently has at their existing Adana location. They're looking for growth, and they're looking for continued growth. And several of these workspaces are intended as future workstations to help facilitate that growth. There's a regional staff training facility so that this building would actually support many of the other locations throughout the metro area that First Bank and Trust operates. Employ fitness space, shower amenities, again, to support the fitness area, and bike access to the building. And then, of course, what we're describing as a compact drive-up lane for that teller window. So this was the unique feature. We wanted to get away from a traditional drive-up and canopy. It didn't feel fitting for this site, and it didn't seem to integrate well with the expectations of the community and the city for this location. What we did is we integrated that drive-up lane within the structure of the building. That structure is adaptable to future uses. It could feasibly be enclosed... It could feasibly be enclosed at a future date should it no longer be needed. We do believe it's needed now, especially in a post-COVID era. The demand for that level of service is certainly there. We're showing a one-lane entry, a one-lane exit, and two lanes within the interior to speed up the queuing and get cars through and out quicker. Some sustainability considerations for this project. We're, you know, not trying to shoot the moon with net zero, but we're trying to put together the pieces that we can and the places that we can that make sense for our client and for their budget. We have several standard practices within our office that are going to apply to all of our projects, and then there's a few that we kind of put into the above and beyond bucket that First Bank and Trust wanted to explore for this location, some of them being the electric vehicle charging stations, future adaptability of solar panels on the roof. Solar panels are not proposed, however, the roof is structured for it. Continuous insulation, low VOSE materials, that's standard practice within our firm. Prioritizing steel over concrete and masonry is typical throughout this building for structural purposes. Low-y glazing throughout is another feature. LED lighting throughout as well. High-efficiency HVAC systems. All of these kind of fit together as a puzzle to kind of support an overall building that is more efficient and is going to consume less energy. The bike racks and the showers and things like that on a user level also help support those goals that First Bank and Trust holds. I'll jump ahead to the exterior design. Of course, these images have been shared and circulated ahead, and I'll just kind of highlight at a high level, you know, what our goal was here, but the main thing is, we want to integrate with the community. We want to integrate with Pentagon Village and surrounding buildings, but we also want a little bit of that unique character of First Bank and Trust. So what we did is, we picked and selected all the same similar materials and systems that are being used by our neighbors, metal panels, stone, limestone, and a lot of glass. We sort of created these illuminated, internally illuminated fin features that were kind of our way of, you know, collecting those materials and forms and making them unique to First Bank and Trust, and then we wanted to carry that theme around the full four sides of the building, again, improving that walkability, illuminating sidewalks, and bringing that character to other facades of the building so that those pedestrian routes are more appealing on all sides. You know, whether or not that trail I highlighted is feasible, at least the path to get to the main entry is, I believe, an enjoyable walk. There's a night view showing those fins illuminated in the main entry here. That's going to kind of wrap up the architectural portion. Again, I thank you all for your time and consideration. Welcome any questions.
All right, thanks, Mr. Peterson. Any questions for Mr. Peterson at this point in time? Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you for the presentation, a lot of really interesting things. With these fin features, it looks like they're lighted fixtures, so they're not going to wick energy out from the bank. Is that correct? Because I know like when there are porches on an apartment building, if they're part of the structure, they'll wick the energy out and bring the heat in in the summer and the heat out in the wintertime. It looks like these are, for looks rather than structurally part of it, so that they're not going to wick the heat out in the winter and in in the summer. Is that correct?
It's a good point. That's a major consideration. So I highlighted one of our sustainability features being continuous insulation, and that is important. So these systems happen outboard of the insulation, so our building envelope occurs behind the decorative fin features, yes.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, and I hope you can get that trail in there to keep that walkability 360 in the building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Standby, Mr. Peterson. I don't have any questions either at this point in time. Mr. Scott, anything you want to add?
No, none of us has any questions.
Mr. Logan, anything you want to add?
Scott?
Oh.
Good evening, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. Jim Baston, Market President for First Bank and Trust. Scott is unable to join us tonight due to some family issues, so I'm here. I just would like to say thank you for giving us this opportunity and considering our request. We are very excited about this opportunity. First Bank and Trust came over to this market in 2017 when they acquired People's Bank of Commerce, which was located at their current location in Edina since 2005. In that time, we've expanded from about $150 million in assets to almost $600 million in assets between Edina and our office in Roseville. We have other locations outside the MSA, like Cambridge and New Prague, and we're looking to add within the Twin Cities as well. But our expansion and our continued growth, we are at the limits of capacity in our current location in Edina as well as Roseville. This building will give us an opportunity to increase our presence within the Edina market, and it will also house, there'll be several leadership members here. The gentleman who handles up, or heads up our entire mortgage operation for First Bank and Trust, he will be office out of here, our SBA director, who handles all of our SBA requests throughout the entire organization. He will be headquartered here, and myself, I will have an office here as well as the Market President, and our retail director for Minnesota, she will have an office in this location as well. So we appreciate the time and appreciate the consideration of requests, and we turn it over to questions.
So it's okay, Jim, if we call it the corporate headquarters?
Well, I think they might, back in South Dakota, they might be a little concerned about that, but you know.
All right. Thank you. Prompt any questions from council members? All right, very good. Standby, I'm going to now open this up for public testimony. This is a public hearing matter, and we're going to see if anyone in the audience wishes to testify regarding this matter. Feel free to come forward. I don't see anybody coming forward from the audience. I don't hear anything from the audience. Let's turn now to folks that might be listening in or watching us from the virtual world and check with Director Benarot to see if we have anybody in the queue.
I do have someone on the phone, but no one in the queue. As a reminder, if you would like to speak during this public hearing, please press star one after connecting to the conference. That's the asterisk symbol, then the number one. It's possible my caller just wants to listen because we just started the public hearing and it hasn't been a minute yet. I would recommend we wait until 8:20. I'll come back to you then or when I have a caller, whichever is first.
All right, very good. We've got the 786 number. The call-in number is on the screen along with the conference PIN number. And then, as Director Benarot said, you can press star one to speak to the council.
It is 8:20, and I don't have another caller, so I think it's safe for you to move forward.
All right. Director Teague has suggested that the motion be to close the public hearing at noon on November 28th and continue the action to the December 6th City Council meeting. Before I ask for a motion to that effect, I thought of one other question I wanted to ask you, and that was with respect to the third sign, the internal sign, and why you thought that was important to have that sign focused internally into the development. Either you or Jim could answer that question.
I'll take that one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So right now, the code has provisions for two signage elements, and that's dictated by the two road frontages that we have. So it made sense to us to allow one sign at least, you know, with, let me go back for a visual here. So I'm going to go to this site plan here with West 77th Street and Computer Avenue. We've got one sign at that angle facing towards West 77th Street, kind of top right-hand corner there. That one made a lot of sense. That's got great visibility that identifies the building. The other one that made a lot of sense was the First Bank and Trust logo that's at the top of the tower feature facing northwest. So going back to that rendering, that's that number one with the F in it. That one is also great visibility and building identification. There really wasn't anything internal to the development that highlighted and identified what the building was. Back to the site plan, if you were a guest entering the site from Computer Avenue along the south side, there's really nothing to identify the building, and we felt that it was important, given the multiple angles of this building, to have a third signage feature facing inward.
All right, good. Thanks, Mr. Peterson. That prompt any questions from council members? Is there a motion to close the public hearing in this matter at noon on November 28th and continue the action on this item to the December 6th City Council meeting?
So moved.
Second? Got a motion by a member, Anderson, second by a member, Pierce, to close the public hearing in this matter at noon on November 28th and continue the action on the item to the December 6th City Council meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? And now, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the council.
And the next matter we have, Director Teague also has, and that's a proposed lot division. And I think the applicant is here with us, and this is over on McCully Circle. Director Teague?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This property is located on the far west side of town, right on the border on 169, just south of the crosstown. Property is located on Arrowhead Lake. Note on the screen that the properties were platted to the middle of the lake. In reality, they owned to the lakeshore, not to the middle of the lake. This property is unique in that it has two access points, one off McCully Circle where the current house gains access, and another access point off McCully Terrace. So if they wanted to today, they could utilize that McCully Terrace access. Closer view of the site. Here's a look on the McCully Terrace side. You can see it appears as though it's a vacant lot. This is a view down on McCully Circle. This is the existing home on the property. The site is, this is the zoning map, the site is zoned R1. So all of the properties that are white are zoned R1. Those are single-family homes. These properties that have the hash marks over them, those are duplex lots. Those are zoned R2. One item of note is these two properties right here were originally zoned R2, but they were rezoned to R1, so they're single-family homes now coming off of McCully Terrace. What the applicant is proposing here is to tear down that existing home and build two new structures. So this is a look at the proposed subdivision. There's a lot going on here, but the building pads are within this area here, this dark kind of hashed area, and the second building site would be right here. They're relatively narrow. They're about 40 by 50, 40 by 60. This area here indicates a steep slope, so any slope that's over 18% is classified as a steep slope area in Edina. So this site sits high and then slopes downward toward the lake. All of this area, you can't disturb slopes over 18%. The applicant is not proposing to disturb that area. Should this subdivision be approved, one of the conditions is establishing a conservation easement over this entire shaded area all the way down to the lake. Within that conservation easement, they couldn't take down any trees unless they were diseased. They couldn't create any lawn surface, can't remove trees or have any buildings constructed within that conservation easement. If the preliminary plat is approved, when they come back for final, that easement would be established and part of that final approval. Also, note that they're proposing rain gardens in the rear yard on each lot. The idea there is to capture the runoff before it goes toward the lake to, again, preserve those slopes in this natural area. The applicant is agreeable to that conservation easement.
What's the depth of that conservation easement? Is it like 50 feet or can you recall?
Yeah, it's much greater than that. It's probably over 200 feet across and, oh, maybe 150, 200 feet down to the lake. So it's this entire shaded area.
Okay. And what can be planted in that area?
They could plant, well, we'll have to work out the specific language, but I would imagine they could plant trees, things like that. They just can't disturb the slopes or remove existing trees or construct buildings. Those are the general parameters of those types of easements.
So if they wanted to plant wild grasses, that would help with cleaning up water before it hits the lake, they could do that? There's some latitude on what they can do?
So with the proposed plans, they would be removing quite a number of trees. As you know, the council has recently approved the new tree ordinance. It doesn't go into effect until January 1st of next year. However, the applicant is agreeable to meeting that tree ordinance, which essentially says for this property, they would have to replace the trees that they remove, and again, the applicant is agreeable to that condition. So minimum lot size is established by the median lot width and depth of all properties within 500 feet. So what we're seeing on the screen is that 500-foot area where those medians are calculated. The duplex lots are not included in that calculation. So the median, as determined by their surveyor, the minimum lot area here is 18,731 square feet, 102 feet in width and 181 feet in depth. So Lot 1, they are requesting variances to all of those standards, and Lot 2 in lot depth. The city has a street frontage requirement that you have to have at least 30 feet of street frontage. Up on McCully Terrace, that entrance is 28 and 1/2 feet. It's an existing condition, but I just wanted to make note of that. So this request does require a subdivision, preliminary and final plat, along with those variances that were mentioned. So two primary issues that staff and the Planning Commission considered, and the council will consider with this request. First, is the proposed subdivision reasonable for this site? Both staff and the Planning Commission believe it is reasonable. The Planning Commission recommendation here is for approval. Lots within this area have a wide variety of shapes and sizes, and I'll show a map here that shows that in a minute. The proposed lots are generally similar in size and shape to other lots within the area, including the width at the street, and the existing lot is one of the largest in the area. These next two slides demonstrate lot areas on McCully Terrace and then the next one on McCully Circle. So highlighted in blue is the property that we're looking at. The lot that will come off of McCully Terrace is just over 19,000 square feet. These first two homes, these are duplex lots, 12,000 and 13,000 square feet. Those single-family homes, lots that I referenced before, were originally platted for duplexes, but are now, single-family homes are just over 16,000 feet in area. This lot here that has a 21 feet of frontage on the cul-de-sac is actually a duplex lot. It's, again, 12,800 square feet. This next lot is 24,000, so larger than the proposed lot, then a 21,951 square foot lot, again, larger than proposed. This access point is 25 feet, and the largest lot on the block would be 6443. And the largest lot on the block would be 6443. On McCully Circle, the proposed lot size is just over 16,000 square feet. This lot would be larger than the single-family homes to the north and east. And again, all of these lots are duplex lots. So again, the lots on McCully Terrace are, they're all irregular shaped. And upon compliance with the city and the watershed district requirements, we believe that the proposed subdivision wouldn't have any negative impact on adjacent property. That includes the establishment of that conservation easement. The second issue is, are the findings for the variance met? In this case, we believe the practical difficulty is caused by the size and shape of that existing lot with access available on two streets, which is very unique. Additional difficulties include that steep slope that goes toward Arrowhead Lake. We believe that the proposal to split the lot is reasonable in the context of the neighborhood. And again, up on McCully Terrace, there's that appearance of a vacant lot. We did receive a number of comments on Better Together Edina. Most were in favor. Those that were opposed to the project live closest to this site. Some of those concerns included traffic, that the proposed lots are too small, concerns about parking on McCully Terrace, there's no affordable housing here, and a lot of concerns about impact on the environment, impact on the lake and tree removal. Staff has outlined alternatives for the council to consider when you make your decision in a couple of weeks. Recommend an alternative for approval and denial with findings for each. Again, the staff and planning commission recommendation is for approval, but the recommendation this evening is to close the public hearing at noon on November 28th and continue action to December 6th. And with that, I can stop and answer questions.
All right. Questions for Director Teague on this matter? Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With those rain gardens proposed, is that part of the watershed district plan? And would that be a requirement, or is that just something that's nice to have?
Yeah, so this is subject to review by the watershed. Potentially, those could change.
And city staff.
And city staff.
So they came with one rain garden for both properties. We didn't like that they were combined. We needed each individual one to maintain there separately. So that's how they got to this, and we'll continue to review that if it gets approved during permit.
Okay, but that's a condition of approval. It's not optional if we put it in there.
It would be, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. That was my question.
Member Pierce? Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think my question is probably more for the applicant. This is a request to do the subdivision. And I think you mentioned there's a house there that will be torn down. So my question is, if this gets approved, then what's next? What's the intent behind the subdivision?
Yes, so I'm going to outline the process moving forward. If the council approves this preliminary plat, their next step would be to, along with the city and the city attorney, draft that conservation easement that would be established. Then they would come back to the city council for final plat approval and the establishment of that easement over the slope. Once that's approved, they can file that plat with Penopin County. And now this officially is two lots of record. And so they, whether the property owner builds a house himself or markets them, two new single-family homes could be built on that property within this hatched area, within those areas that meets all of our setback requirements.
And you've got the applicant here. I think Mr. Mahassas is here. And give him a little bit of time as the applicant to explain what he's thinking about here. So you want to come forward? And identify yourself and give us your address, too, please.
My name is Dipendra Maseh. I am the owner of 4616 McCully Circle. Thank you, Mr. Carey, for amazing presentation. Thank you, Mayor, member of city council, and everyone else who took time to be here today. So I bought this land with the intention to build, to tear down the old McCully House, which is like 100 years old, and build something new. But after talking with so many developers and surveyors, we saw opportunity to subdivide the land because this land is unique. It touches both straight McCully Terrace and circle. So once we did that, so once we did that, McCully, McCully family members, Pat McCully and Tom McCully, whose grandfather built that, reached out to me when they knew I am the new owner. So I got a chance to explain my ideas, what I'm going to do with the lot. And they were really supportive. They explained, at some point, they thought about that as well, but they talked with the city, but never tried it. And then they started explaining about the history of the house and the McCully Circle, how their ancestor owned all the lot around the Arrowhead Lake and started development. That grew my appreciation for the project and the land. So I realized the best and highest use of the lot would be by subdivide. So the next process was to go and get all neighbor approval. So I individually go, propose the plan and talk with all the neighbors. Most of the neighbors were in support. So my plan is to, once the subdivision get approved, plan is to build two single-family homes, which matches the neighborhood. So in conclusion, I would like to conclude saying, if the subdivision get approved, that will match the neighborhood and also enhance the property. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mahassas. Does anyone have questions on the council for Mr. Mahassas? All right. Member Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for Director Teague, just based on the new subdivision, what kind of requirements would there be on single-family structures that could be built there?
They would be required to meet all of our applicable setback requirements. So they would, they could come in for a building permit. Their grading and drainage plan would be reviewed by engineering to make sure that's consistent with the plat and the conditions that were put on it. And as long as it met those setback requirements, the city would issue a building permit.
And then height restrictions, anything?
Oh, yes. Yeah, they would be required to meet our height restrictions as well, two and 1/2 stories.
Two and 1/2 stories, okay. I just think it's important to know all of that before moving forward. We've had instances where there've been great ideas, and they get to a certain point, and then the developer understands, well, there are other requirements. And then you're restricted from what you're able to do. And I didn't see any of that in the presentation today. So I would just encourage you to continue to work with the city to understand all of the implications with the design that you're coming up with.
Right. So what we did is...
Thank you.
Yeah. So before I started process, I went to the city and before even applying, because I wanted to get answer of all my questions, so to decide if it was worth of time even applying or not. So once I got answer from city for all the questions, I decided to go forward and apply for it.
All right. Other questions for Director Teague or Mr. Mahassas? All right. Thank you. So Director Teague is recommending that we use the same sort of process we used with the last public hearing matter, and that is to close the public hearing at noon on November 28th with regard to the subdivision request at 6416 McCully Circle, and then continue the action on that matter to the December 6th City Council meeting. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second?
Commissioner Jackson moves. Commissioner Pierce seconds.
Hold on. Oh, we have to do the public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry. We didn't have anybody here. Yeah. So anybody here wants to testify regarding this matter? Sorry. Yeah, all right. Anybody online?
I do have someone on the line.
Okay, thank you.
I've been waiting for like multiple meetings for this moment. I have two people who would like to speak. Operator, will you please unmute the line for our first caller? And Mr. Nelson, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Yeah, hi, this is David Nelson. Am I coming through?
You are, Mr. Nelson. We can hear you.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm a lifelong Edina resident who also works in Edina. We live immediately next door, just the east of this lot. From a common sense perspective, you know, when you're on a lake, homes, the broad side of the house is what faces the beautiful view, not the thin sides of the home. Both of these homes would need variances even to squeeze in their narrow side of their homes facing the lake, and that would just look odd. Also, the way that's laid out, 100-year-old oaks that are on the sides of the property, because the McCully home is centered kind of in the middle looking at the lake, you would be taking out all the, you know, the flying squirrels, the natural habitat, that type of thing, but it would just look odd. The other, if you look at the residents who live in the area are overwhelmingly against the subdivision. The voices that are in favor generally don't live in Edina. And the people against the subdivision would include the most recent residents of the property that just sold it. And I think it boils down to this of who the city council is representing. If it's the will of the Edina residents most affected by the project, then it should be denied. If it's to cram as much density into the area as possible, you know, then we should approve. But then I think the council needs to be more public that the goal of Edina is density at the cost of what the local people in Edina want. So that's all. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Nelson, would you give us your address, please? You say you live next door, but we don't have your address.
Yeah. Sorry about that. 6411 McCully, just immediately to the east.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Operator, will you please unmute the line of our next caller? And caller, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and members of the council, good evening. My name is Michael Ramy, 6401 McCully Circle, in Edina. You may have seen an email I written to you all and to city staff in my opposition of this lot subdivision, as I was one of the four individuals who did speak against this lot subdivision of the planning commission when there was no one there who did speak in favor of this lot subdivision. First of all, I think we need to revisit the pad size of what Director Teague said on the plat. And if you look at the buildable width, 42.6 feet and 39.4 feet respectively, and the narrowest point of the rear yards are 21.4 and 20 feet respectively. That's a pretty narrow building pad. Obviously, the lot subdivision that this applicant is proposing is going to meet the lot requirement because 50% of the lot is unbuildable. It's slope, it's nature, it's habitat. It's protecting one of our very few precious lakes in the city of Edina. On that note, I'm wondering why the applicant and city staff haven't taken the time to discuss the Nine Mile Water Creek Shed District and with the City of Edina Water Resources Group on the impact of taking a lot and subdividing it on this lake here, which is its own ecosystem and provides the beauty in Edina. Again, there are very few resources like this in the city of Edina. And for someone to come in and try and propose a lot split that's going to increase the sediment twofold from what it would be if it was one house. Furthermore, the applicant doesn't live at the place. He doesn't intend to live at the residence. His address for his company is out on University Avenue, Minneapolis. He bought the lot for $630,000, according to Penopin County records. You split that in two, you have two $315,000 lot. Please look at the resale value of lots around Arrowhead Lake and tell me if that's in market par with what's happening around here at Indian Hills. This is a unique place. One other note I'd like to mention is on the tree replacement. If this does get approved, which I hope you listen to your residents and not some out-of-town applicant, us individuals have voted you on council to fight for us and protect the city to be the best it is. I would like to know what the caliber inches of each tree being replaced are compared to that being removed, because I have a feeling it would not even be close. Mature trees are going to die, animals are going to die. The environment is going to be impacted, and the whole look and feel of Indian Hills and Arrowhead Lake are going to be impacted. I strongly suggest that you listen to your residents in Edina and deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramy.
I do not have any other callers.
Okay. Well, for both Mr. Nelson, Mr. Ramy, and anyone else that may have been listening in in one form or another, you'll have until, I think if the motion passes, that I got ahead of myself on, my apologies for that. You'll have until noon on November 28th to continue to provide information and views on this proposal from the applicant. And Mr. Mahassas, one thing, did I ask you your address for the record? Would you want to come up and give us your address? Again, I apologize if I asked you that before, but there's... Okay, you live there?
I don't live there because it's an old house. I live in Minneapolis.
Okay, so the gentleman that represented that you lived in Minneapolis, that was accurate.
Right.
All right. You own the property on McCully Circle, but you don't live there?
Yeah, I don't live there because the house is 100 years old, and it's like unlivable. You can't, I don't know how the previous residents used to live there, but the structure really deteriorate.
You do or don't have plans to live there?
My plan is to live in one of the houses.
Live in one of the houses?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Other questions? Okay, thank you. All right. With regard to this matter involving a proposed lot subdivision at 6416 McCully Circle, is there a motion to close the public hearing at noon on this matter on November 28th and continue the action to the December 6th City Council meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce. To the motion as stated, any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. All right, that concludes the second public hearing matter that we have in front of us. The next matter is one that we've had in front of us a couple of times, as Member Pierce has pointed out to me. And it looks like we are entertaining a request to continue the public hearing to December 6, 2022. Director Teague, any comment on this at all?
Other than this was a request of the applicant. He wished to hold the public hearing when the full complement of the city council were present. They have waived the 60-day rule, so we don't have any issues with the clock.
All right, very good. Is there a motion to continue the public hearing to December 6, 2022 with regard to Resolution Number 2022-97, 2022-98, and Ordinance Number 2022-17?
So moved.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to adopt the motion as stated, which would involve continuing the public hearing on the property at 6016 Vernon Avenue with regard to the two resolutions stated involving a comprehensive plan amendment, rezoning and site plan with multiple variances for the property at, as I mentioned, 6016 Vernon Avenue. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion to continue this matter to December 6, 2022, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And now we are on to the next portion of the agenda, which is reports and recommendations. We've got, the first matter in front of us is Resolution 2022-106, which would accept a donation to the city of Edina for the Park and Rec Department from the Edina Community Foundation. Is there a motion to adopt the Resolution 2022-106?
So moved.
Second?
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by a member Pierce to adopt Resolution 2022-106, accepting donations. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And we've got one donation in this reporting period. It is by the Edina Community Foundation, and it is a donation that they make annually to help with scholarships so that kids can go to park and rec programs. It's called the Connect Card Scholarship Fund, and it's a very generous donation from the community foundation for $10,190.58. Thank you to the Edina Community Foundation. And the next matter in this portion of the agenda is one that our clerk, Sharon Allison, has, and it is... it is after every general election, we have to do some canvassing of the results of that election. And Clerk Allison is requesting that by Resolution 2022-107, we canvass the results of the November 8, 2022 municipal election. I'll turn now to Clerk Allison.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I actually do not have a presentation for you tonight. It's just asking you to approve the resolution as stated. And I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Sure, let's do that. Let's ask if anybody has any questions with regard to your request to approve Resolution 2022-107, which canvases the results of the, of the November 8, 2022 municipal, municipal election. Anybody have any question?
I have a question.
All right, go ahead. Member Jackson.
This is the first municipal election that I've had the chance to vote on. Is it, do you always list the people who are the right, right end votes? I thought that was very interesting.
Councilmember Jackson, yes, we do.
Okay.
It is required.
Okay. Thank you so much. And thanks for all your hard work. This is exciting.
Any further questions for Clerk Allison? Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-107, which canvasses the results of the November 8, 2022 municipal election?
Still moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce to adopt the resolution as stated involving Resolution Number 2022-107. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the Resolution 2022-107, canvassing the results of the November 8, 2022 municipal election, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. You know, one of the things that struck me was we had, this is very unusual for Edina. I thought it was a lower-than-normal election turnout. And I was wondering if you had any observations about why?
I don't actually, because on the flip side, the absentee voting was higher, a higher turnout. But I really don't have any observation on the, the fact that it was a lower turnout this time around.
Okay. All right. That prompted anything from any other council member? All right, then let's move on to the next matter, which is the potential approval of a new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday sale liquor license for Ichiban Japanese Restaurant, doing business as Ichiban Sushi. And Clerk Allison has this matter as well.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this one was on the agenda on 11, November 1st. We held a public hearing, and as is the standard practice, it is back on the agenda tonight for approval after the public hearing ended on, can't remember the date exactly off the top of my head, but last week, Monday, I believe.
Okay. Questions from council members? Is there a motion to approve the new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday sale liquor licenses for Ichiban Japanese Restaurant, Inc., DBA Ichiban Sushi?
Still moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Jackson and second by Member Pierce to approve the motion as stated. Any further discussion? Those in favor of approving the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And then we've got Director Milner, who's going to tell us about the traffic study that we commissioned down at the 50th and France neighborhood with regard to the Metro Transit E-line, the proposed Metro Transit E-line, Bus Rapid Transit line that would run through Edina. We had some concerns about the location of the station stops. The Met Council wanted to put them right at 50th and France, going both north and south, and we had suggested 51st and France, both north and south. And so we asked Director Milner to retain a traffic engineering company to look at this issue of performing a traffic study to see if it endorsed or supported what the Met Council found, and Director Milner is going to report on that tonight. So Director Milner, thanks for being here. Look forward to the report.
Thanks, Mayor, members of the council. Just like the mayor stated, we conducted, it's almost, I mean, the modeling is complete for a supplemental traffic study related to Metro Transit E-line, the Bus Rapid Transit. So it is a Metro Transit project. In Resolution Number 2022-42, the council supported the corridor plan except for that 50th and France stop location, and that resolution noted moving that to 51st and France. So there was also concerns from the 50th and France businesses. They voiced concerns about the traffic and the lack of the dimensions of the traffic study, just staying on France and not intersections outside of that corridor. Metro Transit took all that feedback, and they approved the corridor plan with the stop at 50th Street. So they're moving forward with preliminary design at this point, but we still, as the mayor mentioned, wanted to conduct that additional traffic study. So we hired a consultant to do an additional traffic study to include more intersections outside of France and better understand those impacts outside the district, but also what would be the impacts if it would be at 51st or at 50th. So the traffic modeling itself is complete. I saw the results last week. We wanted to bring that to the council as soon as possible. The written draft study is underway. It's a draft right now. We're providing comments. That final study will be available in three to four weeks. We'll get that to the city council. We'll submit that, and we'll also submit it to the individuals at 50th and France that are interested in that study. So the results, again, it's traffic. What we're looking at is what is the results of on-traffic in the district and surrounding areas for one bus every 10 minutes. So there was three things that we looked at at the study. It's delays, which is level of service. It's the queuing or the storage capacity when there's a bus there on the existing facility. And then it doesn't make sense to go to 51st Street. Is there significant changes in traffic operations if it's at 50th or 51st? We wanted to understand that, if there were some glaring changes by having that stop at a different location. So we collected a lot more turning movements, as it's shown at these locations on the bottom of this slide. So if I start with delays or that level of service, so we compared the impacts with those stops at 50th and 51st, very minor impacts, similar to what Metro Transit found. There's really no impacts, differences between either stop, and it's very minor in either case, or typically the same, whether that stop is at 50th or 51st. When we expanded outside of France, really minor, very minor impacts to those surrounding intersections and no direct link between whether it's at 50 or 51st Street. So when it comes to level of service and delays, there's no noticeable benefit with the 51st Street stop. I just want to note that AM and PM peak is still challenging, as it is today. It's going to be challenging after the bus system goes through, but it's not going to cause the issue and create any additional challenges down there. When we look at queuing, so that's the amount of space, so when there's a red light, how many cars are parked on from 50th to 51st? Is that whole block used, or is there room for queuing? So again, we compared the two locations, minor impacts to queuing at either location. There's adequate storage space in the build or no build case. There's minor queuing issues when the bus is there, but it's back to normal operations before that next bus arrives 10 or so minutes later. So really no noticeable benefit on queuing between the two stop locations. And again, we have challenges today with queuing in those peak times, and there's going to be challenges after this project move forward. So the overall result is there's no major impacts to surrounding intersections. There's no increases in delays or storage or queuing based on either location of the transit stop. In the report, you'll see some other notable things that they said that Metro Transit should consider, and they did, and that was crash history, pedestrian volumes, and accessibility, and access to those other transit routes, which Metro Transit talked about in their study. You'll see and discussed here also similar results. Again, I won't get into those two because I think the major points were the traffic on the surrounding stations, surrounding streets with either station location. So I'd be happy to stand for any questions. And this graphic here is, again, the, the route of that BRT line, the E-line, and that area that we looked at is circled there, and that's the 50th and France district. So I'd be happy to stand for any questions. And again, we'll submit that final report here in the next few weeks, probably before the end of the year. So probably that second meeting in December, we'd get that on your agenda, just so you could see those results.
Questions for Director Milner? Okay, so could I read into that report that there would, you know, you said no benefit to a level of service by being at 51st Street? Could we also infer that the reverse, that there's no detriment to the level of service by being at 51st Street?
From a traffic standpoint, there is. That's correct. But when you look at the other variables here, that's where there's a difference between the stops. So the current transit service on 50, you'd have to walk that extra block, so people with disabilities would have more distance. There's, they did a pedestrian volume count. It was in the hundreds on 50th Street. It was in the tens down at 51st. So the access and the volume of pedestrians is far different between the two locations. So similar to what Metro Transit pointed out about the accessibility, crash history really didn't have anything, but then the access to other routes. So from a traffic standpoint, no difference in locations on stops. It was those other variables that maybe you could discuss whether one's better, a better benefit or not.
Okay, all right. That prompted any other questions from council members? Okay. Well, thanks for that report. We'll wait for the full report in a few weeks. That sure, I guess it was reinforcing for the Met Council, but it sure seemed contrary to our intuition and experience with respect to what we see going on at 50th and France or the near neighborhood. So I'm pleased that we did that independent study to give us a better level of comfort. All right, the next matter we're going to talk about is the American Rescue Plan Act. We received, I think approximately $4.9 million in two different tranches. We figured out a way to use that first tranche of money for the public benefit, and you had described that in detail in your memorandum. And now staff has some ideas around what to do with that second tranche of money, Phase 2, as you call it, with the American Rescue Plan Act, how to, how to allocate those funds. And eager to hear that information. From just getting it a few days ago, I can tell you right off the bat that it, I felt like it required me to take a few more days to digest this thing, and I'd like to think about setting it over until December 6th as the date to determine whether we approve Phase 2 of the American Rescue Plan Act spending plan as recommended by staff. I just think there's a lot to think through about how to use $4.9 million, and I want to make sure I'm comfortable with it. And I'm not comfortable having gotten it Friday and making a decision on Tuesday. So anyway, having said that, why don't you go ahead, Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. If the council will recall, our first discussion around the spending plan for our American Rescue Plan Act dollars really was, was a plan to spend all of the, all of the money, both the first tranche and the second tranche. We proposed that plan to the council, and the council said, no. We will, you would, you approved half the first, first phase, but really wanted to wait on, on approving the allocations for the second phase until we had a little bit of experience to see how, what kind of impact our, our funding would make in the community and, and internally. So, so we did. So we spent, we allocated the first half of it. We, and I described how we did that among the seven categories of approved spending: government operations, housing, public health, economic and workforce development, infrastructure, public safety, and community aid. What makes our spending different than, I think, all of our neighbors is the amount of emphasis we have put on spending money on community aid. When you, and that is just, that's, that's the category of, of, of spending that emphasizes external organizations, nonprofits. Our relationship with our school district is very different than any of our, any of our comparable cities in terms of how they have spent their money. We have spent, while most, while many of our peer cities, Eden Prairie, Eagan, Maple Grove, Burnsfield, for example, have spent 100% of their funding on internal, on internal needs, such as fund balances and internal costs and revenues that they haven't received, we've spent none on, on those internal needs. Minnetoka was 84%. Woodbury spent 100% of its funding on water infrastructure. Lakeville spent 51% on infrastructure. Brooklyn Park spent 50, excuse me, 42% on public safety. Those are, those are all as a result of individual community decisions. Of the, of the funding that we have available, which is some allocation of unspent money from the first phase plus the second phase, was, was right around $3 million. And the proposal is to spend $300,000 of this money with the Edina Education Fund for the letters program, $150,000 to the Edina Chamber for the Innovation Lab that we've heard a little bit about already, and you'll hear more at the HRA meeting on Thursday, $100,000 to continue the city's Internet Essentials Program, which is essentially a way that the city helped buy down the cost of high-speed internet for, for neighborhoods and for individuals that could not afford high-speed internet, $150,000 to our Next Gen Trees Program. This is the second half of that program. I was planning 1,000 trees in the community with approximately $250, so $250,000. So approximately $250 per tree, which is a reasonable cost. There is a $300,000 allocation for a community surveillance camera network in the 50th and France district as a pilot program, $100,000 to help some of the financing costs and consulting costs around an affordable housing program, $200,000 to expand this, continue the city's expansion of its broadband system to serve our city utilities, $500,000 for public-facing capital expenditures, primarily in Centennial Lakes Park and Edinburgh Park, and finally, 1.2 million on government operations, primarily employee compensation, training, support, and operations. And those two, public safety and government operations, are two areas where we have not spent any money previously, and we're proposing to spend money on, on this phase. Again, I think our, our comparisons to not only our neighbors tell, tell a picture of how the city has, has used this money for the benefit of the community. And in near the end of my memo, I also outline how, how our spending looks different compared to the greater MSP average, which we can see from a tracker, a tracker website that they have used to, to track ARPA spending at the local level. That's what we're looking for. In fact, Mr. Mayor, when you suggested this, and I look back at what we did the last time, we came forward with a presentation, we talked about it, we answered your questions, and then we acted on it at the next meeting. So I think this, what you're proposing is consistent with what we did the last time.
Yeah, I misspoke when I said 4.9. We've got about 3 million to work with in this, in this particular tranche.
Yeah, that's right.
Could you speak a little bit to the 1.2 million on government operations and how that proposed expenditure of 1.2 million affects the budget work that we've already done, or whether it was factored into that budget work?
I can. So, and, and Assistant Manager Schaefer can jump in if I'm missing something too. We have, as I said earlier, we have not spent any funds on kind of internal costs that were really, as kind of came to us out of the pandemic. We have some. We shouldered those costs through, through other, other pots of money, other funding that we have. But we have, we have employee costs, both on the compensation side, training and support side, non-compensation side, that we really need some help with. We have, we, we have some, some union contracts that are coming into the upcoming year that we are looking to, looking for some additional funding to follow through with. We're also looking for funding to take on some challenges we have with, with employment, like you hear a lot of employers have this year, finding people, attracting people, keeping people employed. We're having to adjust some of our wages to attract people to work in some of our jobs. We have some, some funding levels around employee compensation and staffing levels that we want to use this funding for to cover some of those hard to, hard to hire, hard to, hard to hire, long to train? Is that the phrase? Hard to hire, long to train. Public safety employees come to mind, where it takes a while to actually find people, to attract them, to select them, to do all the different background checks. It makes some big advantage to us if we, if we can do some hiring ahead. So if we can make commitments to new employees before existing employees leave or retire, we can have a much better staffing situation than waiting for someone to retire before they're replaced. And if we had some funding to make that happen, we could be more aggressive like that, too.
And so, did we factor this into the preliminary budget that we approved, or did we not?
Well, some, some of it we did, but some of it we didn't. You know, when you think back to the budget that we are going to use in 2023... You know, when you think back to the budget that we are going to use in 2023, remember that budget was approved in December of 2021. And I don't think anybody, staff or, or council or any, in, in most cities, were looking at the kind of inflation impacts that, back in December of 21, that we are seeing today. That inflation impact was not only notable for its size, but, but the speed at which it hit our operations. And so having a two-year budget is good most of the time, but in this time, that, that factor didn't help us.
Good. Well, I think it's helpful not only for us, but for the residents in our community when you recommend, through the conversations you've had internally, that we spend 1.2 of the three on government operations, that we understand a little bit more detail what you had in mind, and I think the conversation tonight was helpful on that. Council members, any questions, comments? Yes, Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've got two questions. One is with the surveillance camera at 50th and France. In our work session this evening, we talked about building things and not maintaining them. Seems to me that with surveillance camera, not only do you have the equipment, but you also have the data storage. Can you talk a little bit about the long-term costs of that program?
Sure. Well, I'm not sure that we know all the long-term costs of that program yet. What we are seeking here is an appropriation that we can work within to figure out what security benefits that we could bring to the 50th and France Business District by linking them via camera to our dispatch center, where we have employees that are there and working. We are still working on putting this all together. We've had some discussion with, with our internal staff, with the business community, and also with some consulting groups around security cameras. This is a pilot project for us. I don't, it works because that area is compact and dense, and, and there, we already have a number of cameras in that area to begin with. So this really is adding to a system that's already present in a smaller, in a smaller scale.
Okay, so it's a pilot to see if we can improve the safety of the area.
That's right.
We are already gathering data, so the data storage and, and issues around that are not going to change with this program.
That's right. We would manage these, this, this, these information streams much like the camera information streams we already maintain through our liquor stores, through our parking ramps.
So this is enhancing an existing system as opposed to creating something brand-new?
That's true.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. The other question I have for you is, you know, in other, especially with the ARPA funds, we gave some money to Veep, to the local food shelf. I know that, that people are continuing to feel the impacts of the delays of the supply chain and inflation. I noticed that's not on the list. Was that a part of the consideration, and can you speak to that?
It was, and the reason it's not on the list is that, I don't believe they have spent through all the original allocation we provided.
Okay, great, thank you. Those are my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Would that same thing be true with respect to the rental assistance?
I believe it is, but I'm not, I'm not as sure on that. I think it is, though.
Member Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just two questions. One is just the percentages that you have on page two. I guess pages one and two, maybe. How, where do I see the $300,000? How is that allocated with the Edina Education Fund? Is that operations?
That, that would be in the community, uh, community aid category.
Okay, got it. I do think that, so to that point, and then also to healthcare, mental health is referenced as well. And so I, I just wanted to make the point that I think it's, it's good, it's appropriate maybe for us to use these funds in principle to try to close some of the gaps that were created because of the pandemic. And so I do think that that is, is appropriate. The question I have related to that, and I think it kind of goes back to where I thought you were going, Mr. Mayor, when we started, I can't assess, I don't think I have the ability to assess or the information to assess whether or not these are the right amounts. And so should we be, as an example, investing more to help our kids close the gap? Should we be allocating more to address issues of, of mental health? And so the question in there is, how do we get comfortable with that? How do we get comfortable with the level of recommended spending in those areas?
Hypothetically, 300,000 versus 500,000.
Yeah, it's a great question, you know, and, and going at this the way that we have, we've made it more complicated on ourselves because we have chosen to recommend a spending plan that, that puts money into a lot of different categories rather than just saying, we're going to put 100% of it in infrastructure, and that's what we're going to do, which is what most of our other peer cities did. I'm not sure how to make it more comfortable. I'm comfortable with it when I look, when I look at the impacts it's making in the community, and it, when I compare it to what other communities have done, I feel more comfortable with it. But I think what, what we are realizing now, kind of getting to the, to the last opportunity with these dollars, is that we have some internal needs that we have not, we have not paid enough attention to, and we need to.
I thought that was a great point you just raised. Councilmember Pierce, I mean, I appreciate the first item on this list being the Ed Fund proposal of 300,000 for the letters program. And that's something I think we all worry about, whether we're part of the school district administration or just citizens living here, is that kids that slipped behind during the pandemic, you know, they probably aren't caught up yet. It may take a couple of years. And how are we all going to kind of gather them up and serve them as best we can? And is, is this, and I think Member Pierce is making a great point, is this enough? How do we know what's enough to help the school district who has some ability, but us also with this ARPA money, make sure the kids get back to where they need to be to be able to be productive and feel good about themselves, and, and then eventually be, you know, great citizens in, in not only our community, but in the country, and really productive?
I'm not sure if I can tell you how to determine whether it's enough or not, but I can tell you that your colleagues on the Woodbury City Council, Burnsville City Council, Lakeville City Council, Bloomington City Council, Minnetoka City Council, Eden Prairie City Council, aren't spending any money with their school districts. So you're spending $300,000 more than any of the, all of those other cities combined, right? So I think from that perspective, working with the school district here has been something that sets us apart and something we should be proud of, I think.
What was the deadline for spending this money, 24?
25, by the end of 2025. So part of the, part of making this decision is, is giving ourselves enough time to spend the money, right? That, that, you don't want to get to the end of the, end of the day and, and not have it put to use.
Not so much worried about, for a while I was worried about a clawback. At the federal level, but I'm not worried about the clawback anymore.
Not so much anymore, no.
So it kind of begs the question, do we need to spend it all? Again, you know, spend everything you're recommending, or? Because it, it seems like what we did from a budgetary standpoint, planned for most of this stuff for, you know, and so that, I mean, that 1.2 million that you want to use internally, maybe we, I don't know. I just don't know. I'm just engaging in out-loud thinking here. Anyway, Member Anderson?
Thank you. I just want to refine the question that Member Pierce is asking. How was the 300,000 arrived at? Was that by discussion with the district? Is that their specific request?
Right.
How did that go?
There, it is, I think we attached it, but it is in response to
Two letters.
A request from them.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. From the Ed Fund.
I think the total cost was 700.
Right, and the district is putting in some money, and the Ed Fund was asked to raise some money.
That's helpful, thank you. And then a second question as it relates to this is, and it may be in the packet for Thursday, which I have not gotten to yet, the $150,000 for the Innovation Lab, how does that affect the request for the loan? Is that in addition to, or is that in lieu of some portion of that?
I think it is in addition to.
I see.
I think that's right.
So, well, we can discuss this further on Thursday morning. However, that, that tells me then that the 800 that is being requested, that is, we've kind of expanded that to 950 here. Is that accurate?
I don't think so.
That's a great question. Yeah, so there's another good reason to hold off on the spending until?
Yeah, I'm okay with that, or next year.
Got a clarification on Thursday?
Yeah.
Because I remember Bill Nudorf was asking for a $200,000 loan forgiveness out of the 800.
Yes, that's correct.
And so I get to thinking, well, now is this 150? Does that relate to the forgiveness, or is it something over on top of that?
I think it isn't in addition. I think it's in addition to.
Well, that's, that's, well, that's a good, great question.
Thursday.
And then go ahead, Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you. I have a follow-up question to Member Pierce's comment. So first of all, I'm really excited to give this money to the schools and to this, to the Ed Fund. It's probably the top priority for me. So I'm really, really happy that we can help out with that. But I wanted to ask you also, I remember there was some public comment period on this. Can you talk about some of the public engagement that went through this process?
Right. We had, first of all, we did some internal engagement around it with employees and, and of all levels in our organization, and, and had, took a lot of input from them. We did something similar through, through our social media platforms and, and through Better Together, to gather information from. We did a couple of, of kind of open sort of Zoom operation calls that people could drop into. But that's the kind of feedback, we got a lot of different feedback. And one of the, one of the items on our list here is the Trees Program. That was really, that was a direct result from resident feedback. Because initially, I didn't think we would be able to do that, but, but it turned out that we could, and so this turned out to be a popular item on the list.
And the feedback for the money for the schools was also positive?
Mm-hmm, yeah. The schools did get, also got an ARPA allocation as well, so our funds are supplementary to their funds.
Excellent, all right. Thank you very much.
The Internet Essentials Program, which I thought was such a great use of funds last time, I think $500,000 is what we committed last time to do that original arrangement with Comcast. It's nice to know that we can continue this all the way through 2025 for $100,000. And then with respect to the proposed capital improvements in Centennial Lakes Park and Edinburgh Park, I know from time to time we discuss how we're going to keep Centennial Lakes at the same level of quality that it is right now, and does this funding get us where we need to be there in, in that park?
It gets us on the way there, and these are some, these are some, particularly, these are some costs which, which are sort of in the middle in terms of CIP spending would go, but they are coming out of the, they will fund, make funds available to both of those park systems, or both of those individual parks, who both have their own funds and CIP available, but really, there's not sufficient funding in their, their individual funds to carry this level of cost. So this is, this would make some, some improvements in those parks that you would notice.
Were there other things that you considered that you determined weren't worthy of advancing that we should hear about? Do you recall?
Nothing comes to mind.
Assistant Manager Schaefer?
Well, I think certainly we received dozens and dozens of ideas. So I think what made it to the list were those things where there was some stickiness or themes that coalesced that were similar between internal and external.
So you had a lot of external input? Okay, to the point.
I know we did at least three in-person community meetings, and as you said, a couple online as well.
Because you did a couple of them, I think, right? Yeah.
Anybody else have any further questions as you scroll through the proposed list? All right. Do we need a motion on this to continue it? No, I don't think we do, do we? Just hold on it next time? Okay. All right, thanks for doing that. All right, let's go now to Manager Comments.
Manager Comments? Couple of things. One of the, one thing that is creeping up on us fairly quickly here is the state legislative session will start August, or excuse me, Taugist, January 3rd this year. So it's an early start. There's a lot of new faces there. We will be working on the city's legislative agenda, proposed legislative agenda for the state legislative session and for the National League of Cities as well. And we are reaching out to our legislative team, which now consists not only of the Representative Edelson seat and, and Dr. Alice Mann, but also Senator Latz and Representative Yuakim. We'll invite them for the annual joint meeting with the council, and so we're working on that already. And that's all I got for you.
All right. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to again congratulate Sharon on a, our clerk, Clerk Allison, or formal, on a successful election. And it was, I'm glad it's over. I want to remind people that Thursday, the 17th, is the next version of one, our town, our, or one town, one family. And I hope that people will participate. This is going to be where we start putting some plans in place. I'm pretty excited about that. It's at 5 o'clock at the community, at the district offices, right? No, where's it at? At the high school? That's right. At, at the high school in the cafeteria? It's been moved to the middle school. Okay, to the middle school, Valley View Middle School. All right, I read my email, and it didn't stick, thank you. But I'm looking forward to it, at Valley View Middle School at 5 o'clock, and I hope that folks will come. Thank you.
And you want to reemphasize, on Thursday?
This Thursday, November 17.
All right, thank you. Member Anderson?
Nothing for me tonight, Judge.
All right. Member Pierce?
I just have one, one comment. So back to English Rose, so that conversation, and Manager Neil talked about this earlier, but I just thought the, the process and the way that, that, that conversation ended up, I think just demonstrates the process, right? And we don't always have, you don't always get the outcome you want, right? That's life for all of us. But in that scenario, I, I did have a resident share with me earlier this morning that Joshua worked, met with the neighbors, and essentially decided that it'd be difficult, not necessarily impossible, but difficult to figure out a way to make three homes work in that location to just be part of the community, and decided not to move forward. And I just think that that's what, that's what we, we hope happens when we ask developers to, you know, meet with the neighbors, understand some of the concerns, really in earnest, try to figure out if there's a way to address issues. And so I think that process, I thought, was an excellent process. And likewise, I think for the city, we, we did push on the density issue question, and the state came back emphatically, right? But, and so, however, I think we're still trying to figure out if there are longer-term solutions that we can, we can bring to bear. I just think that's the, the right way to approach things. And we may not be pleased with the outcome once we, you know, get to the end, but I do hope that the effort is appreciated. Definitely by me, the effort is appreciated by the city, and in this case, the residents and developers spending the time and effort. and developers spending the time and effort to go through that particular issue. So other than that, that's it.
Thank you for that. Director Teagan, Mr. Kendall, and Mr. Neil, Manager Neil getting on that right away was really appreciated by all of us, I think, and especially by the neighborhood. Last Thursday, I think it was, the folks in our Chinese-American community asked me to be part of the grand opening of the Asian Market in the neighboring town of Eden Prairie, back in the old Gander Mountain site, and it was really quite a festive event. I think I told you all that I had also been invited over to Taste of Asia, which was at the Union Depot about a month ago in St. Paul, and there were probably 10,000 folks over there, and and recognized quite a few folk, quite a few people. But the Asian market, I'm told, is just booming already. And the weekend, people couldn't find a place to park, and it, on the main floor, there's a restaurant where you have your food served by robot, you get these little R2-D2 characters running around with a tray, and hopefully, they keep the food on the tray until it gets to your table. I don't know that. And then there's a grocery store, and then up on the second level are all kinds of small businesses, including many more restaurants. So it's, it's worth the trip out there to see it. It's a fantastic addition to the cultural diversity of our whole region, and I think it's got a lot of good things to say about it. So just giving the Asian market a plug and asking you all to go out there and and check it out for yourselves. Last night was really one of those special nights in Edina that comes along once a year, and it is the Edina Public School National Merit Reception. And so you've got all these National Merit Scholars and their parents and grandparents, and grandparents get to talk about generation skipping, how they were responsible for these kids being smart, not their parents. And and then teachers get celebrated, the National Merit semifinalists and the National Merit commended students. I think Member Pierce has had at least one in his family, maybe more to come. But I wanted to read the name. We got 13, I think, National Merit semifinalists, which is remarkable, and then about 20 commended students. In the National Merit semifinalist category, Ansel Erle, Riley Frederick, Shayon Gandhi, Abid Hassan, Evan Hawley, Ryan Jiang, Shamida Kumar, Edwin Shi, Jacob Teetz, Thomas Whalen, Kevin Yi, and Robert Zhang. And the commended students were Sukith Buddha Dedi, Jack Garfin, Sidney Gremmels, Alper Guvenen, Maxwell Hirigs, Kirthy Kasiap, Anamika Kansara, Ria Kashal, Nicholas Liebert, Luke Mercado, William O'Connell, Hannah Owens-Pier, Chloe Rose, Alexander Rubin, Timothy Rupert, Anna Shreg, Adele Snyder, Everett Stephen, Sophia Techen, and John Vaccaro. Had some nice conversations with some of their parents, and congratulations to all those families and those students who will help lead our town and lead our world in the years to come. And that's it for me. Anything coming up that we need to be mindful of?
HRA, Thursday morning.
Yeah, all right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second member, Member Pierce, that we adjourn the meeting of the Edina City Council this 15th day of November 2022. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Carried. Stand and adjourn.